Madam Clerk, could you call a roll?
Counselor Kane. Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Kroll.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Yang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Phelan.
Present.
Chairman McCarthy.
Present.
Eight members.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to read the governor's provisions that he has on the open meeting law. In accordance with Governor Charles Baker, March 10, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the Finance Committee of the Quincy City Council will be convening via remote conferencing services that lay on QA TV, Channel 9 government access on Monday, September 21 at 5:30 PM relative to any and all matters pending in this committee, including but not limited to appropriation of $14 million to construct a special education learning center at 178 Old Colony Ave. Also pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. So we've had two weeks. I think everybody received Mr. Walker's letter that outlines the thought process of the administration and also the five-year capital improvement plan that'll provide details of major projects coming soon to us in the coming years. I see no reason to deliberate the Special Education Learning Center anymore, so I look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Harris, and it was seconded. We don't need it. On the motion, Mrs. Mahoney.
Thank you very much, Chairman McCarthy. And although I'm very disappointed that we're not going to have a conversation, I think what was missed in this memo as I read it in, and obviously, I might be the only one that might be concerned about this, but that's neither here nor there. But basically, where the memo, and you didn't read the memo into the record, but I'm sure it will be shared with the general public. But what the memo said, that all projects mentioned above, which is pretty much Kincaid Park and Broad Meadows Middle School, and if you would like to paraphrase Mr. McCarthy, I'd be happy for you to tell please headquarters. It goes on to mention other things. But it goes, "All of the projects mentioned above were approved with broad support of the council in last year, signaling the body's prioritization." Now, the last time we actually approved anything was in March, other than the emergency COVID. After March, we were in the COVID arena where we were actually working through the pandemic. So yes, last year, we were in a different timeframe than we are this year. And specifically, what I was asking at the first meeting was I was surprised that the first thing we were talking about is a $14 million appropriation when the summer and since March, and not just the city of Quincy, but the state of Massachusetts and the whole country has been underneath this pandemic, which is wreaking havoc across people's budgets, in people's lives, in their day-to-day survival of just being able to get through COVID. And many of those are constituents that live here in the city of Quincy, and they're expecting us to prioritize things and bring things together for them. They understand that. And the first and foremost is COVID. And there was an article in the paper speaking about how much money has been spent to date, and the hope is that we will get reimbursed from that with the federal government. And the stimulus package not happening as of right now, we don't know if we will. But as the memo goes on, it basically goes on to say, "Few of any projects major in nature that the mayor has not already discussed with the council are publicly." So basically, anything that we read in the paper is a prioritization. If we were to read this email, this memo, it's basically saying that future appropriations, if it's brought to the council or not, and if we read it in the paper, we can assume that those are prioritizations that this administration is putting forward. But the most egregious thing that says in this memo is that this document, meaning the five-year plan, but also this document and the fact that they're telling us what our role is for the council, will be a roadmap. But then again, the ultimate ascription of prioritization is a purview of the council as it contemplates the individual, which this is one of them, an individual appropriation request that's assigned to each. So every time an appropriation comes in, we are to prioritize whether or not it's important. Now, what I really think, it's not a matter of the merits of what this appropriation is for. I know that every single one of you all believe in the merits, and I do too. Wholeheartedly believe the merits of this withstands the desire to have it. But the problem that I'm having is that we does not stop the fact that we are in a pandemic. We are spending money, and we don't know what the state of our finances are. We don't know where we're going as far as where the state's going is for fiscal '22. We don't know if we're going to get the bailout for what we have spent in COVID to date. And we don't know what the prioritization are of the projects that will come before us. And there's many of them. And if I was to go by what this memo states that was provided to us by Mr. Walker through Mr. Chairman from the mayor, it's every time an appropriation comes before us is when it's the prioritization. And what I'm asking for, and what I was asking for, was really to understand the five-year capital projects that will be coming before us and to be able to really put a prioritization on that. Because if we are to do the one-offs, as this memo suggests, then at one point or another, we might get to a point where we can no longer do the things that are the important things. When we finally get the MSBA to say that Swanton is a go, but we find out that COVID did wreak havoc with us, we may not be able to do Swanton. And I think that would become a very big problem. So there are things that we have to do. And I do think that is the question that I was asking and the reason why I wanted to park this particular item until we could have that discussion. I understand that we are going to move ahead with that tonight, but I did want to explain that. And I want to also finalize this by saying, when the mayor was reviewing the candidates for superintendent, one of the questions that was asked for all of the candidates for superintendent was, you know, with the pandemic and with what's happening right now, and I want to make sure I get this correct because it was in the Patriot Ledger, the mayor, the chairman of the school, asked each candidate, how would they handle the economic hit that may be brought on by the pandemic? Now, when hiring the superintendent, they actually understood, he actually understood that point, that we have to be cautious about what we're doing because there's going to be some prioritization that's going to happen. I'd say that we might be actually predicting in the future that we may be having cuts, not only to schools, but potentially fire and police. And if we do not have that conversation and we go ahead with every appropriation that comes before us and just say yes, because as the mayor has said, he has the votes and he knows he can do it, then I would say that we might be jeopardizing the city and its future. So I'm just bringing this forward because I understand the value and the merit of the project. However, my concern was always about COVID and the pandemic. And the fact that we're not doing those due diligences make me very nervous about saying yes to anything. And because it wasn't done for me tonight, I will not be able to support this priority. So that is my statement for this. I thank you for the time that you allowed me to speak, Mr. McCarthy. And I do actually value everybody on the council and their decisions on how they come to these. But this memo should insult each and every one of you because basically, what it's saying is that there is no prioritization, that we make the prioritization for the mayor. And believe it or not, he's to make the prioritization, not us. We should be asking him for that. This administration should be doing that. It shouldn't be done by the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Chair recognizes President Liang and then Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am not going to say too much here, and I generally don't with these kinds of conversations as they take place. But I just wanted to step in and actually speak up here because I take offense to any notion that any single one of us, depending on how we vote, are simply just yes votes coming into this conversation. And I do not appreciate that that implies that, you know, at some level, that any one of us don't do our homework and our due diligence with these conversations and coming into this. And yes, the pandemic is hitting every single one of us in the city very hard in very different ways. And for me personally as well, you know, with my family's businesses here in the city, I don't even know if our family is going to have jobs by the end of this year and businesses by the end of this year. And so I take offense to any notion that this pandemic isn't being taken seriously and that this decision isn't considering the current situation with what's going on. I also respect and, you know, understand the work that goes into these conversations with folks, you know, in the finance department, with folks like Eric Mason. It's not just him making this decision. It's not just the mayor making this decision. It is ultimately up to us. And I just, I take offense to any implication that any single one of us aren't doing our due diligence in these conversations and decisions. So I just, again, I try not to step into these kinds of conversations, but particularly with this one, I feel as though I'm personally offended by what's being implied here, and I feel like I need to clear the air with that notion. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Liang. Chair recognizes Counselor Palmucci. Muted, Brian. You muted.
Muted, yeah.
Oh, man, you missed. It was the best thing I've ever said. Good evening, everybody, Mr. Chairman, members. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I had already, first of all, is there a way that I can make my words to not appear on the bottom of the screen? Or is that just the way it is for everybody now?
No, we have closed captioning.
So I have to read that?
You don't have to, but it's going to be there regardless if you read it or not.
Okay, all right. Terrific. I'm glad we have closed captioning. I'm going to support this. I said that at the last meeting that I was going to support it. I just wanted to comment, I guess in response to my colleague, Counselor Mahoney's comments. I too have some issue with what she had said. And I also agree with some of what she said. I'll say, you know, I think Counselor Kroll and I have been asking for a five-year capital improvement plan that spelled out the city's priorities when it comes to big-ticket purchases for eight years, probably eight years, it's a little bit longer now. We've never gotten it. We've actually gotten variations of it. It's been slow-moving to get, I think, the administration to kind of put pen to paper in terms of what the priorities are. And I think what we received in response to your request in the last meeting, Counselor Mahoney, is similarly not the response we were looking for, not the response to the question we asked, right? Which is, give us a list of the priorities as we see over the next five years from the administration. We don't have access to information such as reports about facilities. We don't have the same access. I suppose if we knew to ask them, we could certainly get them. But the administration has far more purview into, and is privy to far more information about the capital needs than we are at this point. So it would be helpful, rather than a list of things that would be nice to have, a list of things that we need as well as a list of things that would be nice to have over the next five years with the price tag on it as well as recommendations, either in favor or against those particular items within this five-year timeframe. I mean, we know that fire engines have a lifespan. We know how much they cost. We know the year that we've purchased each fire piece of apparatus. There should be a spreadsheet that says roughly when, within a five-year period, when we're going to need to replace a particular piece of equipment. We've never seen that. Other municipalities have that. It's public information. It's Excel spreadsheets or, you know, spreadsheets that show the time period and the cost of the expected life of a piece of equipment, the useful life of a piece of equipment as well as the cost. And we don't have that, right? And I think that's, I don't want to speak for Counselor Mahoney, but that's certainly, or Counselor Kroll, but that's certainly something I've been wanting for some time. And I can suggest in today that I believe that Counselor Kroll and Counselor Mahoney would both appreciate that as well, having that kind of information. So I agree with Counselor Mahoney in terms of the priority. And I do think it's a little bit glib for the administration to say, everything that we present to you is our priority. That's our priority list. I don't see it that way. I think there could be more cooperation, and I hope that there will be moving forward in terms of coming up with those priorities together. And I will say, I've never had any difficulty in picking up the phone and talking to Merrick Koch or to Chris Walker or going in a meeting with either one of them and saying, you know, this is a need in Ward 4. This is a capital need that I think we need to address and having them take that seriously. So I mean, it's a two-way street. I think we all have the burden of putting that forward, but they do as well, especially because of the position that they're in, the administration. Now, just, I wanted to say that my vote tonight is based on the project itself. It is not inconsistent with my appreciation of the city's financial position, the COVID pandemic, or our future capital needs and our future budgetary needs. I think there was a bit of a suggestion that maybe if you're voting in favor of this tonight, it's because you don't understand the pandemic or you don't, you're not taking into consideration or you're not doing your due diligence on this. I'll state for myself, and I can only speak for myself, but I've done my due diligence on this project. I've discussed that link with the mayor, with Chris Walker, and I've also discussed it with our Director of Municipal Finance over the past few weeks. Just last week, I was going back and forth via email with the Municipal Finance Director, asking some pointed questions about our debt levels and our debt service. What's important for folks to understand is that we have a budget that has a debt service level built in. And that's a fiscal policy that this council has approved in the past and continues to support through our budget. So we have a set percentage of our budget that will always be spent on debt service. We're currently below that number, right around that number. And as debt comes off, because certain projects get paid off, we put new debt on there, on the books, and it keeps that same level of debt service. It's built in as a line in the budget. So when we're talking about projects and we're talking about spending money, it's not as if we're spending money we don't have or we didn't budget for. We've budgeted for this. We've budgeted for debt service. And especially a project like this, which I believe will save the taxpayer money in the long run, it actually has a net-net positive on the budget. But even if it didn't, you know, something like a new school, you're not going to necessarily recoup money in the budget from that. But whether it be Sterling, Quincy High School, whatever the school is, these are the things we have to do. They cost a lot of money, and it's not something we can absorb in one year. So it's prudent fiscal policy to bond, to borrow money to build those projects. But what the fiscal policy, prudent fiscal policy requires is that we know what our debt will be for the future. And it needs to stay at a set percentage of our budget. And as our budget increases, the debt percentage, well, the debt percentage will stay the same, but the debt amount that we can pay in will increase. The money we have to pay the debt will increase. Therefore, we could borrow more. So as our budget has expanded, our ability to borrow money has expanded, and we have been able to undertake more larger projects to benefit the whole city than we have in the past, in this 10 years and the prior 10 years. And I suspect in the 10 years moving forward, we'll do even more. So while the COVID-19 pandemic will undoubtedly affect our budget, we still will face the same issues, whether we approve this project or not, from the COVID-19. It's not as if this is going to be some bill that comes out that no one anticipated, and it's going to completely break the budget. It is still built into that debt service. So if you have to cut, if you have to cut spending across the board, and no one's suggesting that at this point, by the way, no one's suggesting that at all. If you have to cut spending across the board by 2%, you cut your debt service level by 2% as well as other areas that you can cut by 2% if it's across the board, right? We still have room to do that because we have debt coming off. We have the ability to hold off on spending after that point if there's a problem. Right now, we do not have a problem. Perhaps we will. Perhaps we'll have to do some belt-tightening. But as it stands now, we are still in a position to continue to move the city forward with positive projects that benefit the quality of life of the residents. So I've done my due diligence. And I don't pretend to think or know what my colleagues have done or have not done to reach their votes. I can only speak for myself. But I just want to make it emphatically clear that a yes vote does not mean that someone didn't do their due diligence or doesn't appreciate the COVID-19 pandemic or the potential consequences in the future. It just means that someone has done that due diligence, has balanced it, or for me, I've done that due diligence. I've balanced it, and I believe that moving forward with this project is important enough to do while taking that into account. So again, I'll be voting yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I would point out three things. The reason I'm voting yes on it. I've taken a lot, looked at a lot. This has been before the city council all summer. First of all, I think we got a moral responsibility to the kids who need these services. And right now, they're shipped out. They can be going over an hour, hour and a half. We have it within our preview to do something about that and put, and bring those kids into a safe, a really good place. And I think we'd be, to take, to miss this opportunity would be a real mistake. Number two, on a financial level. On a financial level, this is going to, in the end, save us money. We owe that to the taxpayers. We are going to pay the money to these kids, whether they're in this building or not, and it's going to keep going up and up and up, and will gradually spin out of control. What we're doing is taking a step to make this special needs center and actually save the taxpayers money in the long run. And it would be, and to say that we haven't taken into COVID, of course, we have taken into COVID. We're also at the lowest interest rates that anyone has seen in generations. So we'd be remiss if we did not take this opportunity and vote for this. So I am voting for this individual project. The mayor has his, he has his powers. We have our powers. As a council, we're here to review the budget. We're here to make suggestions. We're here to, the priorities are going to come from the mayor's office because we cannot put things on the budget. We can make suggestions. We can make requests. But in the end, it's going to come from the mayor. And then it is up to us, as the counselors, to do our due diligence, to look at every angle and how it affects the taxpayers, how it affects all the citizens of Quincy, whether it's during a pandemic or it's during normal times. So I'm very comfortable in voting yes on this. I've done my due diligence on it. And I feel that it is, it's an obligation. We have an opportunity to do something really good for the citizens of Quincy, and I'm not going to let that go. So my vote will be yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Phelan. Chair recognizes Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to make a point that the day after we met two weeks ago, I reached out via email to Mr. Mason. Mr. Mason got back to me right away. And then he actually, I asked for an update of information. He provided it to me today as well. As far as this, I'm not going to repeat what my colleagues in favor have said because they've all made the point. I've got, I came into this position not to be anybody's yes man, but to maybe make a difference in people's lives. And there's a lot of families, you know, that are hurting. All of, there were many families that are hurting. But the folks who have children that need to go to facilities like this, their life is even, is hot enough as it is on them on a regular time. This needs to happen and happen as fast as we can possibly have it put into place. So that is why I voted for it. And I just want to make a point about, so it doesn't get mixed up in this. Is, as far as Swanton School is concerned, I will be continuing to fight for the rebuilding of the Swanton School, whether I'm in office or not in office. That's something that has been, we've brought forward, I think, almost every year to be next in line after Sterling. So I'm looking forward, that building is over 100 years old. It needs to be replaced. So I don't want anybody to think that, by no means, that if something, something doesn't happen right away, we'll be coming right back at the state to look for the money if they disapprove it. This year, we'll certainly go after it again next year, like we do every year. We have to bring it up. So thank you for your time. And I'm going to, obviously, I'm having, made the motion to approve. I will be, I am in favor of this, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good listening to all my colleagues. They give a good information. I understand about the COVID-19 pandemic. Getting back to the capital improvement plan, I've always said this in the past, and I'll say it here tonight. It's always a needs versus wants. And in this particular situation, this is a guaranteed need for the city of Quincy. We tried to convene over the summer. I know Chairman McCarthy tried to get us to meet and vote on this, and we couldn't succeed at that. Here we are four, three, four, five weeks later. We could have had a vote two weeks ago. The longer we wait for a 20-month build, the longer these kids have to wait and not be able to be housed inside this facility, this special education learning center. This is really important for the city of Quincy and the families that have been waiting for many, many years. I've talked to parents that have kids that have gone through the system that had to go on buses, had to go, be transported an hour to three hours every day to these other locations throughout the state of Massachusetts. And to have the opportunity in front of us today is great for the city. We're finally here in 2020 in September, and we're going to vote on this. And this is a huge need for the city. There may be other appropriations where there wants, but this is an actual need. So I'm going to be voting in favor of this. I'm looking forward to, actually, the $14 million is a huge investment for the city. Not only for folks or citizens of the city that don't have children in the system. They want, they tell me that this is the right thing to do. And I continuously hear it throughout the city, and I'm taking that information and putting it here on the council. So I'll be voting in favor of this tonight. I've done my due diligence on this. I've been waiting for this vote. I've been waiting for this early, you know, I've been waiting for this early, you know, special education learning center. And I'm looking forward, hopefully, to the votes tonight and to succeed and move this forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilor Kroll.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Nice to see everybody virtually and, you know, just listening to some dialogue here this morning, I mean, this morning, this evening. Perhaps I could offer up some food for thought before I pivot to the, you know, the matter at hand. And, you know, what I heard is that, you know, there may be, and I, and I found it beneficial, you know, when, when I had, you know, served in your role, Council McCarthy, and I would totally leave this ball in your court. But maybe this is an opportunity, you know, given the uncertainty just taking place nationally to, you know, we have that broader discussion, I believe, in October to, to engage some of those outside professionals that, you know, participate with the help of Eric Mason internally in crafting sort of our financial path forward, right? So whether it's a bond counsel, financial advisor, I think that could provide a greater level of comfort. Again, I'm generalizing here, but amongst, amongst the council to, to do a full download on basically our, our financial position. Now, I did take the last two weeks personally, and I know that I was, you know, probably the context of my conversation probably exhibit that, you know, I wanted to kind of dig into this a little bit more, and I did so over the last two weeks. And, you know, my comments two weeks ago were something to the tune of like, this is next level stuff. Like providing this service locally in your city, in my opinion, is progressive, but it's next level. And I think as a city counselor, as a public servant, as someone who's, as I'm saying this, wow, I've been doing this for a little bit now too. But, you know, I, I know we all just want what's best for the city. And part of this, you know, re, re-envisioning Quincy, rebirthing Quincy, is, you know, putting forward different ideas, different, different outlets to, to bring the city to the next level. Providing specialized education inside of a city, in this case, the city of Quincy, I really do believe is, is a key differentiator. And I totally support the mission as it stands. I would just say too, what I found to be rather interesting as I, as I dug into this. So like as a city council, and I think, you know, Chuck, Council Phelan had touched, touched upon it. So we're providing information from the administration, executive branch essentially sets policy or, or sets the path forward for the city. And then it comes to the council and, you know, we debate or we legislate and we vote it up or down. So we're dependent in many cases on the information that's delivered to us. And what was delivered to us from a financial perspective is, you know, number one, there's no denying the fact that I voted for it. We acquired the building, you know, this, earlier this past year. So an idle building, you know, you, you still, it's still something that you have to consider in terms of an asset to the city. But, you know, an idle building obviously becomes more benefit when there's something going on there. So we presented a model, and what I found to be unique, and it's, it's a little bit different than I've seen anyways with respect to other municipal buildings, is, you know, I think what was used here this, this evening was it's financially beneficial in the long term. You know, it's, it's, it's financially feasible in the short term. And I think from my perspective, that's, that's important, particularly given the uncertainty that's going on, not only locally in the economy but nationally. And, you know, when you actually dig through the numbers, again, we were presented with a model done by Mr. Mason. I know he puts, pours his heart into this stuff. And, you know, we had a pretty frank conversation in terms of what he was assessing, you know, the, the cash flow to be with respect to the building. And, you know, this is, this is more than doable in the short term, which, you know, helped me mentally get to, you know, I get it. It's a $14.6 million bond ask in, in an uncertain time, but analyzing sort of the structure of everything. I think the city is more than in a position to, again, take, take, take it to the next level with offering this service and providing some value for people, you know, that, that would utilize it, but also be in a position where, you know, we're being prudent and thoughtful with respect to the city's finances. But as we kind of progressed through this conversation, again, I'll just close out the way that I began. I do believe food for thought that integrating some of these outside specialists to a broader conversation, I think, could be a benefit for all. And I want to thank you for letting me speak, Chairman McCarthy, and I'll be voting in the affirmative.
Thank you, Councilor Kroll. And I, I want to thank Councilor Liang for letting me go over five minutes. Real quick, this is a model that Quincy's doing. This is a, this is the South Shore Collaborative in Quincy. You look at the layout, you look at the staff that's gonna be in there. This is our own collaborative possibility, but definitely a Quincy first operation. But the potential is endless. And, you know, you know, I, I, my family's been in South Shore Collaborative for a long time. And, um, Councilor Kroll is correct when he says that there is savings of, of, of large amounts of money and making sure that these kids have exactly what they have at a South Shore Collaborative or an equivalent right here in Quincy. And you don't know how long, far that goes with parents to know that their kids aren't on a bus for an hour and a half and getting their OT, their PT, their therapy at a facility staffed by professionals in special ed. I only see this as becoming a jewel for Quincy down the road. But with that, I'll, I'll end. I want to take a vote right now. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call vote for me, and then we'll move right to the council meeting?
Councilor Kane.
Yeah.
Councilor Kroll.
Yeah.
Councilor DeBona.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
No.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Eight members, positive recommendation.
Uh, thank you. And with that, I'll, I'll motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting and turn it over to President Liang. Thank you, Nina, for giving me a few seconds more.
You got it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. All right, everyone, so we're gonna go ahead and start our regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, September 21st. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Council Kane.
Present.
Council Kroll.
Present.
Council DeBona.
Present.
Council Harris.
Present.
Council Mahoney.
Present.
Council McCarthy.
Present.
Council Palmucci.
Present.
Council Phelan.
Present.
President Liang.
Present.
You have nine members, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And if we could also pause and take a moment of silence to honor all the women and men serving abroad and here at home. And if we can also just continue to remember all of those serving on the front line during this long pandemic. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you read the open meeting law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Quincy City Council is holding this meeting via remote conferencing services and is being aired on Quincy Access Television, QATV, Channel QATV 9 Government Access. All right, so before we dive into our agenda items, I would like to turn it over to my colleague, Award Four Counselor Brian Palmucci, for an honoring that we would like to do. Council Palmucci?
Thank you, President Liang. The worldwide pandemic brought by the COVID-19 virus has shaken so much of our world to its core. It's exposed economic and racial disparities, as well as gaps in services and supply chains in both government and the private sector. We've all seen the videos of where it's brought out people's worst traits. But there are 10 times as many examples of this crisis bringing out the best in people, of showing the good, moral, and just among us. Tonight, the city council will begin a process of acknowledgement and appreciation for those in our community rising to meet our current challenges. We'll take time at the beginning of each meeting to recognize Quincy's COVID heroes, the people or groups who represent the best of Quincy, the heroes who in times of crisis run toward the fray for the benefit of all of us, putting them, themselves at risk for the greater good. There is so much good in our city, so many amazing individuals and groups, so much love, support, and caring. We wanted to take a moment to highlight those efforts and formally thank Quincy's COVID heroes. And we, as a council, every single one of us, wanted to start with the men and women of the Quincy Police Department and their families. We're lucky to have the men and women that we have of such high character and dedication serving in Quincy. They're well-trained, they're well-led, and these folks represent our front line in public, in public safety. Our city couldn't function without them. During the midst of COVID-19, when we've needed them the most, they've been there, day in and day out, keeping Quincy safe, doing so in a very difficult time in our society, when their motives and professionalism have been questioned. They've shown the resolve, patience, and care that they're known for, as they continue to serve all of Quincy with respect and dignity. On a daily basis, they put their safety and well-being in harm's way for all of us. It's always been a dangerous job, but now in these times of COVID-19, their families and loved ones are exposed to a similar danger of infection and sickness. And despite these dangers, the men and women of the Quincy Police Department and their families, they don't hide from it, but they embrace it as part of service and dedication to our city. And they've gone well above and beyond. For that and for everything else that they do for us, we thank them. I think we have Chief Keenan and Patrolman Union President Hartnett joining us this evening. And I just wanted to say, gentlemen, thank you. Your contributions to our city are greatly appreciated, and I'd like to yield my time to any of my colleagues who would also like to offer their appreciation to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, your Counselor. And I just want to, before I turn it over to my colleagues, give you a special thanks for bringing this to us. I think that, you know, over the last, has it been six months now, eight months? I'm losing track of time. We've all been in close contact with one another, trying to figure out ways that we can support one another as well as other members in the community. And I think this is a really nice way for all of us to be able to do this together. So I just want to start by thanking you, first and foremost, for bringing this to us. And with that, I will turn it over to my colleagues with any questions or comments that they'd like to add. Thank you, Council Phelan.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to reiterate, I think we, we sometimes forget the police are there. They do such a nice job. We very rarely hear, you know, but then we get those incidents that happen, and they're there. And it's both the men and women who have to show up to places where they don't know what they're walking into, they don't know what they're doing. And I think, and now in our society, we've got a lot of questions come on the police. But the one thing I've learned over the years, working with the city, being a former city councilman at one point, is the professionalism that has gone through the department that has carried through even through this pandemic. The, the professionals of the Quincy Police Department have done a great job, have kept us safe. And the work they have to do, they put themselves in harm's way. So I think it's a great, I congratulate Council Palmucci for coming up with this. I think it's a great way to recognize the people, and, and I just wanted to give my thanks to the Quincy Police Department. I know the great job you do, and thanks for all the residents who work there.
Thank you, Counselor. Very well said. Let me just take a look here and see if any of my other colleagues have any questions or comments. Council DeBona?
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to thank the Quincy Police Department, Chief Keenan, Patrolman Hartnett, for all your hard work over the last six months and all your work that you're doing. It's, it's been an unbelievable six months, and not only the, talk about Council Phelan with the professionalism, is I watch and, and see each police officer in the uproar, in, in situations that are really baffling to handle it very with professionalism is, is to make sure that the people that, and the citizens that they're, they're protecting and giving them the right to be able to speak their mind. And I've seen situations where it could, it could go really, really bad, and I see the police officer make it really, really good. And it's, it's almost like when somebody yells at you, you yell back, but sometimes they mitigate it so well. So I've seen a lot of the officers in action, and over this last six months of seeing all, all the stuff that's gone on in the city, and to have the utmost, utmost respect from all parties and all citizens. So I just want to thank Council Palmucci for bringing this, the COVID-19 heroes on here tonight. And I'm looking forward to working with our police department and the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Council DeBona. Council McCarthy?
Thank you, President Liang. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
Greg, good to see you. Yeah, it was, we just talked about this a few weeks back and knew that it was gonna come up, that, you know, QPD has led the way, along with other first responders. I mean, I, I see Chief Jackson on, fire departments right there, and EMTs and et cetera that are out there in the middle of COVID, in the middle of every other protest that's out there that you people are running into. I know for one thing that Quincy's force here is solid. All our first responders are professionals. I deal with the community police on a weekly basis, and they get involved. I deal with the regular shift police at nighttime in Ward One, and they get involved. And with everything going on, the negativity thrown and the villainization thrown at the police force, these guys still show up, still have a great attitude and a professional and go about their work. So I don't have any problem with the QPD and what you guys do, even non-COVID or COVID. I, we're a first-class organization, Chief. The mayor, I know, is very supportive, which makes it, again, a good combination. I see other communities out there. We won't mention any locations, but it is, it's a disgrace, and it's disgusting that the support that the police aren't getting. I know you're gonna get, I'll speak for myself, my support, and I think the counselor's support. But you guys do a great job, and it's very hard to be out there when all of a sudden, one minute, people react one way, and then it doesn't take them long to change, like the New England weather, and start treating your folks another way, which is totally wrong. It's, it's all about integrity and respect, and you guys have that, and you guys have mine. So thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Kroll?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Chief and Greg. I just wanted to echo the comments to what everybody said. I know that it's an extremely difficult time out there, you know, completely underdressed with all the emotions and just sort of watching the force. I think McCarthy had used the word, you know, exhibit the professionalism, but really the compassion and the integrity throughout all this has been truly, truly just stunning to watch. And, but no surprise, we do have a first-class police department, and I know the issues are always so wide-ranging. But, you know, when you put a pandemic overlay right in the middle of things, it truly adds another dimension. And I just wanted to, you know, kind of, oh, what's been said here, that we are grateful that we have such a professional police. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Do any of my other colleagues wish to speak? Okay, Chief, I would like to give the space for you to say a few words as well, if you'd like.
Sure, I'd be glad to. First off, I'd like to thank you all for your continued support. I know each and every one of you have reached out to us at a certain point in time through this definitely challenging times. It's been probably in 38, my 38-year career, this has probably been the most interesting and challenging time that I've faced, I know personally, and also professionally. I know the men and women of the Quincy Police Department have stepped up to the plate on a daily basis through all of this. They've come to work, they've done what they're asked to do, they've done it without reservation, they have put themselves in harm's way. And I know that they really appreciate the support that they've received from our city council, from our mayor, from our local delegates. They're, they're very, very appreciative of that. And I know it goes a long way in challenging times, especially for morale. The morale at the Quincy Police Department, I believe, is still very, very high, even though we've been challenged like everybody else has for the last six or eight months. We still come to work, these people, I see them out in the backyard in the roll call rooms, outside at roll call, and they've got smiles on their faces, they're laughing and joking, and then they go out about their business and go about taking care of the citizens of Quincy. And I'm very, very proud, and I've always been proud to be a police officer, and I'm proud to be the chief of such a great department with all these excellent men and women that are really doing all the right things. And, you know, I want to make sure that I also acknowledge the relationship that we have with our civilian help or our paraprofessional help, dispatches were there, our, all of our civilian clerks were all in there doing all the right things to make sure that everything went smoothly for all the citizens of Quincy. So there was no interruption of service. I'd also like to acknowledge a couple of people, Fire Chief for one, new Fire Chief. We've got a great working relationship with the fire, with EMS, Bruce has been fantastic. And especially Ruthie Jones, who's been phenomenal at trying to keep us safe. Every day I get text messages, every single day, seven days a week, night and day, with addresses that, you know, people are ill with the COVID disease, that we can prep a little bit better and have an understanding of what we're getting into when our officers respond there. So it's really been a tremendous team effort, all the patrol officers from top to bottom, all of our civilians, top to bottom, and all the city officials from top to bottom have been fantastic.
Thank you so much, Chief. And I will just add on top of what everyone else said here today, that I actually want to thank you very much and everyone in your department for responding to those fireworks going off at all hours of the night. That had been going on for quite some time in the summer, in the midst of this pandemic. And honestly, I think I tired some of the folks out from calling them about those fireworks. So I will just add that in there as well. But in all seriousness, thank you so much to you and your team, you know, regardless of what state of the world we're all in, you guys are always going to be the first call and the first people to respond to any matters, good and bad, in, in this city. And, you know, I just appreciate that, you know, all of you have that job in front of you that you have to do and that you do it well. So thank you so much for being here today, Chief, and thank you to the folks who are joining us as well. I'm trying to gather and see everyone that's here. I see Joe Piptonovich that's here with us, I see Major Greg here with us. gather and see everyone that's here. I see Joe Pepdonovich that's here with us. I see Major Greg here with us. And yeah, again, everyone in your team, I really appreciate it. So thank you again for being here. Counselor Pahmucci, thanks again for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you, Counselor Pahmucci as well.
Thank you. Okay, so Nikki, we gonna go ahead and meet a few folks here. Nikki, if you could, go ahead and move to the first item on the agenda, please.
Thank you. Number one, 2020-122, an appropriation for $3,650,000 for an emergency radio communication system upgrade.
Thank you. And my understanding is that there's going to be a very brief presentation, but that this is also going to be moved to committees that we can discuss further.
Great. I believe that that is my cue. This is Christopher Cassani here. I'm the Director of Traffic Parking Alarm and Lighting. And I'm joined by Gordon Leedy, who is a member of Thai and Bond. He's been working very closely with members of the city, myself, and members of the Fire Department and the Police Department on this important project. And this project sort of carrying on what we were just talking about relative to the police force and the Fire Department. You know, communications obviously are integral to everything that happens. You can't do a good job responding to an emergency if you can't talk to each other and reliably do so. So this particular project that we have, this particular appropriation, something that certainly we've been working closely with Mayor's Office on to bring this before you tonight. The reasons for, give me a second here, the reasons for this project, and please, I hope everyone can see the presentation here. The existing equipment that we have, unbeknownst to a lot of people really, sits on top of Quincy Medical Center. And it provides a, you know, a vital service for the city. But it is aged, it is antiquated, and it is really not accomplishing everything that we needed to accomplish, including having some gaps throughout the network and communication that make, you know, responding to emergencies, as we all know, whatever the emergency is, being unable to communicate makes it even worse. So it has some gaps in coverage, has reliability issues, and then obviously, as we all know, the Quincy Medical Center project, the Fox Rock project is moving ahead and the building upon which it stands is going to be demolished. So it really lends itself for a variety of reasons to a massive overhaul. And this particular overhaul not only is important because we won't have the structure and if we didn't have it, it would be, you know, catastrophic for everyone, but really does allow us to upgrade into the 21st century. We're dealing with very old equipment and this particular project will get us where we need to be so that it's reliable, scalable, and make sure we have the proper coverage that we need across the entire city. So to go into a little bit more, I'm gonna welcome Gordon Leedy to run through some of the, more specifically how we got to where we are and what we might be looking at relative to this process moving forward.
Great. Thanks very much, Chris. I just wanted to sort of take a few moments and let the let everybody know kind of the process that we've been going through and the where we are from a kind of a high-level, a high-level view of the project. There was, beginning of last year, there was a thorough coverage analysis and system evaluation for the existing system, looking to improve coverage and reliability. And a digital simulcast system was recommended. It has a single principal broadcast location, which is quite near the Quincy Medical Center, up at the end of Rockview Road, along with five simulcast stations that are located throughout the city at existing, existing properties owned by the city. The service is provided to, it'll mean that a redundant service is provided to 100% of the city. And it also importantly sets the city up in the future for the ability to to easily update the system without rebuilding the whole thing as well as as well as providing scalability and being able to migrate easily to new systems as they develop. Can you change the slide, Chris? So here's a map of the city showing the the central broadcast location is at Rockview Road, right next to the new Dog Park. That's in the center of this view. The simulcast locations are at North Quincy High School, Pagano Towers, Rishuti Drive Water Tower, Hughes Neck, and off the page actually is the Squanum Fire Station number seven. And really, the only significant construction will be at the, at the central broadcast location. Next, please. So this is the Rockview Road Tower site. You can see the, this is not a brand-new aerial photograph, but it was as good as we could do to date. So the Quincy Dog Park is now complete and the road up to it is now complete. The proposal would be to extend Rockview Road up an existing kind of gravel drive that's there today, improve that for access to this tower location and site a 150-foot self-supported tower off of that gravel drive, prefabricated equipments, shelter in a fenced enclosure along with an emergency generator. And importantly, this is all on city-owned property adjacent to existing city facilities. Next, please. So when we were looking at, you know, this, we understand that that the sighting of 150-foot tower is not without, without some impact to, but we wanted to understand what that impact might be. And importantly, you know, we're required to go through a process of evaluation of visual impacts by the FCC in licensing this facility. So the, as I said before, the proposed tower is a 150-foot self-supported steel lattice tower. We did do a balloon test and sent balloons up in the air and went around to take pictures at various locations. Interestingly, this site is remarkably, even though it is a high point in the city, it's remarkably sheltered from, from, from close-up views by the topography as well as by the trees that surround the site. So, and, you know, we looked at all of the listed site, all of the listed properties on the National Register and found no significant impact on historic resources. Next, please. So here are some photo simulations that we did. It's kind of hard to see on this screen where the tower is, but I suppose that speaks to the fact that it's not particularly visible and certainly not in your face from virtually any location within a mile of the, of the site. Next. So the, the project cost is kind of broken out into two major components. One would be the, the equipment, design and installation of all the transmitters and the the broadcast equipment. And that, that is the subject of a, of a bid that was received by the city through the state procurement process. This is, this, the system is all part of, Quincy's not the only ones that are doing this. It's, it's part of a statewide coordinated process to roll out these systems so they can all talk to one another. Then we have the site work, the tower itself and the equipment shelter, the emergency generator and lighting and security. That winds up being about $465,000. And then utility extensions, extension of the city fiber system, the electrical utilities and so forth to both the broadcast tower site as well as to the Rishuti Water Tower site. That's about $185,000. There's electrical work at the other simulcast facilities to provide adequate grounding and electrical supply. That's about $81,000. And then you add, you know, bonding, insurance, materials, testing, construction, engineering and contingency. And you wind up with about $900,000 of work beyond the Motorola proposal. So the total for the, for the project is envisioned to be $3.65 million. And that is, is, most of that has been subject to bid. So we have, we have good prices. And we also are including a modest contingency to cover any unforeseen circumstances that come up. So that's, that's what I have and we'd be perfectly happy to to answer any questions that, that might be out there.
Thank you so much, Gordon and Chris. So like I said, this is going to go into Finance Committee so that we can have further discussions on it. But I want to make sure to give this space as well while you're here for my colleagues to ask any questions. So with that, I will open it up to my colleagues. Counselor Pahmucci?
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I wasn't going to engage in a back and forth. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Well, maybe this is, requires an answer, but I'm not loving how we're, we're getting started with this, how this has been kicked off. I'm pretty sure, and I can pull it up on my computer, but I'm pretty sure the letter that I got that went out about this project from Mr. Cassani said it was a 100-foot tower. This is the first that I'm hearing it's 150-foot tower, which obviously is significantly larger.
I could be happy to answer that question with the counselor, you know, I, so when we sent out the letter, really more, a mistake more than anything else. What has been rendered on the screen and what was done with the balloon test was 150 feet. Would we put on, you know, the, the letter said what it said and obviously we're here now very clearly saying that it's 150 feet. So it's 150, it's not any other number, higher or lower. And certainly accept any responsibility for sending out something that could be construed as misleading.
Okay, I appreciate you explaining that. Obviously, Ward Four, City Council, I'm very sensitive to things being built with height. So let me just say, as we start this conversation, I know it's going to committee, that I am disinclined to support anything else that, any other construction such as this that, that would obstruct the visual or pollute the visual appeal of West Quincy. So I never try and prejudge something before I get a full presentation and I'm sure we'll talk more about it as we go. But I'm certainly in the default position that is not favorable to supporting this. But some questions that I've been asked by residents and I just want to throw them out there, you can, you can, you can get to them and you can answer them offline or at the hearing that we end up having. Are there any health risks to area residents from this? What other locations were considered? Why was this site selected and not other locations? I'd also ask that, and I think you had said this in an email to a constituent recently. I'd ask that we make the, you make the visualizations available for the public to review, like on the city website and then we can, you know, I can spread the word on that, where to find it. I couldn't actually see the visualizations, all of them, the second row on my screen because of the because of the words, the words in the bottom blocked it, but if we can make that public. And then my, my most important request, certainly the most important to me, is we don't have any rules on the city council about when something's taken out of committee and voted on, right? And that, and that's fine. That's just the way it works. What I would ask, given, given the history that we've had in Ward Four, when things were voted on, people felt, and then they're there, whether it's the billboard or the tower in West Quincy, people felt as though they didn't have a voice in the process. They felt as though they were duped in some way, that the process went forward without them knowing the facts or how to be involved. So the biggest request I have of the administration and I suppose to the Finance Chair as well as President Liang, is that when, whenever this is to come out of committee for a vote, I ask that it be on the city council agenda, on the public agenda, so that I can communicate and I'm sure the other counselors involved whose area would be visually impacted, so that we can tell folks, hey, it's on the agenda if you want to weigh in, if you want to see what's happening. I want to, I want to make sure that nothing about this can be challenged as not being above board, that everybody has an opportunity to see how we're, you know, how this is decided, how it's voted on and everything that's said about it. So those are my comments. I'd appreciate you being here. I look forward to having a hearing with you at some other time and getting some answers to those questions. Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Cassani.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCarthy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Before I move into Finance, just a couple of quick curiosity questions. Motorola Solutions, I think that there were other bidders on this and that was the down select. Mr. Cassani?
Gordon, if you'd like to. Yeah, I'm not, this was procured under a state contract. So there is, there's like a, there's, there were pre-negotiated pricing and discounts on all of these, all of this equipment. So I think it was, it was bid through the state.
And one of the goals, Counselor, too, and I can just comment on this, is to make sure that everything we have is compatible with everything else that we have. So it's pre-bid to ensure the best pricing that we can get. And it's the compatibility that we have with existing equipment is obviously, as you could expect, incredibly important with a project like this.
Right. And the second thing I had was because of the extensive renovation here of equipment and bringing it up to speed, which is all great. Will our, our network need a major upgrade to handle it? Might be a Joe Pepdonovich question or a Mr. Walker question, will we have to upgrade our current network?
I want to answer the, the previous question first. The reason why we are with Motorola is we're on the Homeland Security Team, UAC, and all the nine regions are on the same system. So we have to ensure interoperability, number one, for that system to work, which means that we have to go with Motorola Solutions, number one. Number two, the answer to your question as far as the network in there, the city is planning to run fiber up to that location. So there is some network to be done for that to work correctly. It will be part of the total city fiber solution, which will be a redundant solution at that.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll talk more about it. Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
I'm good, President. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mahoney?
Just a quick question and, and I'm in favor of Counselor Pahmucci because Ward Four does sometimes have things that get erected overnight and we just want to make sure people have an opportunity to discuss. Will there be a public meeting in regards to this and the locations that are selected? And I'm assuming that the tower is the biggest piece, that there's other locations that look like there might have some networking that are going on throughout the city?
Through you, Madam President.
Yeah, Chris, go for it.
Yes, Counselor, you know, working with the, the Ward Councilors in that specific area, the administration is obviously more than happy to host a meeting with the neighborhood, whoever feels appropriate.
Because I think with the location at the Dog Park, I think it actually backs up to Hospital Hill as well, that area over there. So it's more than just Ward Four. So I do know there's been several people who have reached out to me in regards to that. And one of their concerns was I, I think this is the first that they were learning about it. I'm not sure if that's true or not, Chris. I, I don't know if this was identified only when Fox Rock was looking at the hospital side as something that would need to be done.
Yes. It was not necessarily identified as a specific location, but I think there was an understanding from the people involved in the process, at least, you know, a good deal of folks that ultimately that equipment had been in the hospital dating back to the time when the city owned the building. It was kept there as a courtesy throughout the private years of the hospital. And at some point through this process, that that would have to be relocated, at the very least relocated. And we're obviously using this opportunity not just to relocate, but to upgrade.
Yeah. And obviously the upgrade is something that would be able to, could you maybe expand upon this and maybe you'll do this at the public hearing too, the interconnectivity with other municipalities or other communities around us, the benefit of that. um, other municipalities or other communities around us, the benefit of that?
I certainly cannot, but someone else can.
Sure. I think, Joe, that'd be great if you could comment on that.
Yeah, basically, like I said earlier, uh, City of Quincy, uh, we're on the MBHSR, Homeland Security, uh, team with nine other municipalities in case, and, and we're also hooked up into the State Police Corps system with this solution. Currently, we have a single point of failure, which is the hospital. And when we move to the simulcast system, uh, basically what we'll have is redundancy, we'll have, uh, an improved system that will allow us to basically be up and running in any sort of situation. Right now, we're prone to a lot of failures, and, uh, this will provide us greater sustainability for the future as well as the present.
Can I ask one other quick question? I, I believe, and I could be wrong, Joe, but maybe you could educate me on this, and maybe anybody else that's interested in that. Um, right now, is, does the police and the fire department have two different systems? Will this be one system for both, or is it just...
This will be one system for both, we'll be sharing, uh, the common sites amongst both systems.
Okay, so this would, so right now, but currently, as it stands today, there's two different, is there two different systems for them?
Well, when we, when we went to narrowbanding back into 2013, we kind of combined the sites, and this would give us just great flexibility with both systems.
Okay, thank you very much, I really do appreciate that, because there is some miscommunication about that, people, I just want people to understand that, that, um, it's going to be able to give us that interconnectivity, and it's, it's going to better serve not only potentially City of Quincy, but also if there was a larger emergency, we'll be able to...
Correct.
Other, um, and that's part of the reason for the upgrade. I mean, the other big part is obviously because the location, we don't, we no longer have access to it, so it's the timing of that. One question, and maybe this goes back to Mr. Walker, but one question that I did have, um, from some people was just in general, did we identify this as, back when we, when we were, this would be again, it goes back to that question of like, was it identified in, um, that we were going to need to move this, and was there a reason why that we're, were we just waiting just because they haven't started the building?
Yeah, I mean, there's a time for everything, uh, Counselor. There was no lack of understanding from day one of any sort of process that was going to lead to, um, new buildings at the site that this equipment would need to be moved. And in fact, it's been part of the discussion even as the building was there and functioning as a hospital, it was functioning under, uh, different private owners at the time, and still maintaining City of Quincy equipment. So I think even dating well before, uh, any more recent discussions about the future use of the site, not even as a hospital, but even dating back, um, you know, ten, a dozen, uh, years ago, with the, uh, hospital under private control, under different owners, I think it was always in, uh, the back of, uh, folks' mind, both in the administration level, and the police department, and the fire department, that ultimately, yes, we were going to have to find a new location for that.
Again, I guess this just plays into the fact of an understanding, and this is something that, I've only been on the council for three years, and going back ten years, this has been something that was identified, and if we did have something where we could, um, you know, point to or recognize that this is something that's coming up, um, three point five million dollars is again, another bond that's coming through that is a necessity for this one, this is going to be a necessity for the safety of our residents in the City of Quincy, and I, I think of being able to look at that, um, the capital projections of what we're doing, and be able to identify those as they go forward would be very helpful to not only the City Council, but really for the taxpayers of the City of Quincy for transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I do, any of my other colleagues have any other questions? Okay, um, so we are going to go ahead and move this into Finance Committee, uh, for a future meeting, which will be advertised while I have a time, um, and we'll coordinate with Counselor Palucci as well, as far as, um, making sure that any community meetings are noticed as well. So, thank you all. Uh, Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number two, 2020 dash 123, order designation of polling places for the presidential election.
Motion to waive the reading. Motion approved.
I have a motion to approve by Counselor Kane, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor McCarthy, any questions, um, on this item? Counselor Devana?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just, um, just real quick looking at the, the list, um, just, and I, I might, I should have asked the, uh, city clerk about this earlier, about precinct, well, Ward Two Precinct Two and Ward Two Precinct Three A, which is a Thousand Southern Ottery, that has been moved to Clifford Marshall Elementary School? Is that going to be a permanent situation, or is that something that, just for this particular
Thank you, Madam President, and, um, Counselor Devana. Um, Thousand Southern Ottery Management has, um, COVID concerns for that location, so they did ask us to move out of there, um, and find a, a temporary site. You know, we did that, and I think we found the best place to go, um, considering we're right next door, and so, um, we will see how this works out, and, you know, see what happens in our future, whether or not, um, you know, we can go back there next year is just, I, I don't know yet.
Sure, I fully understand, and it's, it's beyond your reach, I just know that some of the folks in, in, in Thousand Southern Ottery do have a little bit of difficulty maybe getting over to, um, um, the Clifford Marshall Elementary School. Is there any type of, um, busing system, or any type of, um, transportation to bring them over there at a different time or anything, or was that spoken about?
I was, um, going to speak with the management at Thousand Southern Ottery. They've also done their, um, due diligence in asking residents there who don't feel comfortable going to the Clifford Marshall, if, that they could take advantage of the absentee, the mail-in votes, um, or the early voting ahead of time. So, um, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure about a ride yet, but, um, it, it would be a nice offering.
Sure, I thank you, um, um, City Clerk, um, Chrisbo, for all your help with this. I know it's, it's just difficult, I know that this will be new to some of the residents over there, I don't remember them switching this up for, for quite a while, and I understand with the COVID-19 pandemic, I speak in their behalf, I know they are very active voters, and, and, and it's kind of like a thing to come downstairs and, and vote. Um, I hope this is, um, something that'll just be maybe this time around, and, and for the future, maybe go back to voting inside. So unfortunately, this pandemic has made an impact on everyone, and I understand their health concerns with, um, moving it over to Clifford Marshall School. Now, is Clifford Marshall going to be open on November third?
No, all Quincy Public Schools are closed on that day for the presidential election, and so for that, um, you know, we'll take advantage of using, um, the cafeteria, um, there's great space in there, right next door to it is the gym, we've been looking at the logistics, um, there is two doors, um, that you can enter through to go in and out, um, you could do Ward Two Precinct Two, one entrance, and Two Three A at the other. Um, there are about twenty-five spots up there, we will, uh, bring up some temporary handicap, uh, for parking in front, and, uh, we feel that it is a good location, um, and we'll send out, um, notice to all the voters in Ward Two Precinct Two and, um, Two Three A that are impacted.
Um, thank you, um, um, City Clerk, Chrisbo. Um, just to add a little bit further, I know that I got in the mail yesterday, the, the applications for the mail-in balloting, has that been sent out to all residents of Quincy?
It's been sent out to all residents of Quincy that did not respond to the first one in, um, in August. So, uh, Secretary Galvin has done a second round for, uh, people to take advantage of a second mailing. So if you would like to get your ballot by mail, please fill out the card, put it in the mail, and as soon as we get the ballots here, which we don't have them yet, but as soon as we do, we'll be working on getting all of those requested ballots out to constituents.
Thank you, and if any of the, uh, the folks over at Thousand Southern Ottery, or any other senior housings out there that want to take advantage of the mail-in balloting, please take advantage of it, because we don't know how November third will, will pan out for, for weather conditions and/or getting to the polling places. So, thank, thank you very much, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So we have a motion made by Counselor Kane, seconded by Counselor McCarthy, do we have any other questions or comments? Counselor Kroll?
Thank you, Madam President, sorry, I, uh, actually had a computer update push my way, so perfect timing. Nicole, I'm sorry if you covered this already, but, uh, has there been hard copy notifications sent into the building?
There, there has, um, they put it in their newsletter that, um... They have, yes, and we've been communicating with them, and we're going to let all residents of Ward Two Precinct Two and Ward Two Precinct, um, Three A, we'll notify them all and let them know of the change of polling place.
You will?
Yes.
Hard, through hard copy, medium, right?
Yes, we're going to do a mailing. I don't want to do it too soon, because I don't want people to forget, but yes, we will, absolutely.
Well, it's the Counselor Devana's point, and I just caught the tail end of it, it's that fine line, right, where you definitely want to notify people as close to, but also give them liberty and, and leeway to decide whether or not they want to just do a mailing, versus have to, you know, some folks, not everybody has an automobile.
Yeah, and we will also put it in the Quincy Sun, we'll put it in the Patriot Ledger, we'll put it in, um, the, um, World Journal that we...
Chronicle, Ward Two E's newsletter. But I'm happy to put it out there.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, seriously, let me know what I can do to communicate, because it's, it's definitely a change, for sure, given the circumstance.
In, um, on Election Day, we'll definitely have signs in front of a Thousand Southern Ottery, leading people up, um, to the Moody Street entrance.
Very good, thanks again, apologize for the, um, technology.
No, no worries, um, I don't think anybody noticed, um, that you were often coming back on. Not in a, hold on, not in a bad way, I just mean that like, because you were...
Yeah, 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 point made, point taken, I get it.
Okay, um, I'm, I still didn't, I'm so, I'm so, I'm so going to stop talking, stop digging, right? Um, do any of my other colleagues have any other questions?
I get it.
All right, um, if there are any other questions, before I move into a vote, I just want to follow up, um, to Counselor Kroll's point, actually, Nikki, I know that you guys are always putting things out into the local papers in multiple languages, and I heard you saying that you're also going to put it out to, uh, World Journal, but can you just also confirm that the letters going to individual households will be translated as well?
It will, thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. Um, all right, so with that, um, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor Kroll?
Yes.
Counselor Devana?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Palucci?
Yes.
Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item on the agenda is number three, 2020 dash...
Motion to waive the reading, motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to waive the reading, and motion to approve made by Counselor Kane, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor McCarthy, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, with that, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor Kroll?
Yes.
Counselor Devana?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Palucci?
Yes.
Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Great, item passes, uh, number four, please.
Number four is in 2020 dash 125, in ordinance amending municipal code, chapter 196, licenses and permits, adding to Article Two, business licenses and fees, section 196 dash 14, regulations of short-term residential rentals.
Motion to waive the reading?
Counselor Phelan?
Okay, thank you. Um, this is, this is an item that, that, that I was brought in, and I thank, I put it out to all the councils, and I thank all of them for signing on. And, uh, it's going to go to committee, and you were pushing it to the ordinance committee, where, where Counselor Mahoney, hopefully, will have a hearing on this. And, um, as I was campaigning, when I was campaigning for office, I went around, I began to see a lot of residential, single-family neighborhoods, where you would knock on the door, and there were people living in there that were not living, it wasn't a single-family home. And I began to see, uh, see a lot of it all through Ward Five, and I worked all summer long with the law office, I put in a, in a, uh, a motion last spring, right before COVID, to look at this and come up with regulations, and short-term, for short-term rentals, and also for, uh, like Airbnbs, boarding houses, anything like that going here. I've seen a lot of these that have filtered into residential neighborhoods, um, the issue, I think, is also if we want to keep the quality of our Residence A neighborhoods, we want to keep them as residents where families can grow, uh, you know, young professionals can have their house and live in peace, but what's happened is a lot of people are moving into these houses. It also becomes, and they, they're not buying it and living there, they're renting out all the different levels, they're renting out rooms, they're renting out for a week, two weeks. What happens is, it also becomes, it also becomes an affordable housing issue, because people are going in, scooping up these homes, and when a family or somebody comes in to buy that home, they're priced out because somebody's using it as a business. And it's basically a business use, it's not a use for resident, and, and a residence. It's, it, most of these people are not living there, they're just simply renting them out, leaving them there, and I don't know about, I know a lot of the other Ward Councils probably deal with the same thing. I have several people calling me about this house, about that house, I send the, I send the building inspector down, in a lot of cases, the building inspector will go down and says, nothing we can do, we don't have any laws on books or anything like that. The laws that went into making this ordinance came from City of Boston, a lot of the cities that are around here, and what, what it done, the City of Boston did it, and cut their, their short-term rentals by more than two-thirds after they priced out regularly. So there's precedent for this, and a lot of the cities, cities and towns around here, and I asked all my, you know, all my, uh, colleagues to read it, and I, and this is the first draft, so I realize there will probably be amendments and different things that will come in, and we can work on that in committee. But, um, with, with your permission, Madam Chairman, I don't know if anyone else wants to speak on it, but I would also like to refer this to the ordinance committee, and also, um, and put it out for advertising.
Absolutely, Counselor Phelan, thank you so much. So this is going to go ahead and be referred to ordinance committee, but I want to make sure to open it up to my colleagues with any, um, questions or comments. In the meantime, uh, Counselor Kane, we'll go to you first, please.
Thanks, thanks, Madam President. I just realized that this is going into ordinance, and so there'll be a larger discussion, but, uh, thank you to my colleague, uh, Counselor Phelan, for, for bringing this up, we've had some issues in Ward Three, and, um, so this is a very timely piece of, of legislation to be proposed. I know that, um, folks in our area will certainly, uh, be happy to see that we're doing something about, um, some of these, some of these Airbnbs and this short-term rentals that people don't like, so I look forward to the discussion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Kane. Counselor Devana?
Thank you, Madam President, thank you, I'm happy to co-sponsor with you, uh, Counselor Phelan. This, as an at-large counselor, I've been getting this all over the city, um, throughout my time, my fifth year of being in, on, on the council, it's spilling over into all wards, and it's, we have to have some type of blueprint, some type of area to violations and penalties and enforcement, um, and, and working with the Department of, uh, Inspectual Services, as well as the Health Department on, um, you know, helping our residents and helping our citizens that live in these neighborhoods, especially that Res A. So I'm looking forward to more discussion, I'm happy that this was on the agenda, and that will go into committee, and that we'll deliberate a little bit more on this, and maybe get to some, some, some type of amendment, amendments, and, um, I, I just, um, it's long overdue, I, I know that, um, I've, a lot of folks have, have continuously called me as of yesterday, as of, um, the last week about this in, in certain areas of the city. So, thank you, Madam President, looking forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President, um, yeah, to echo, uh, Counselor Kane, I, I applaud Counselor Phelan, I, I ran into her a few years ago myself, um, in Ward One, it, it comes and goes, but it might be out there and you might not know it's there. So, um, to get a handle on this, to have a public hearing sooner than later, um, in regards to, as Counselor Devana said, it, a citywide problem that, um, will infiltrate its way into Residence A and, uh, and not make it the Residence A that we all, we all want it to be. So, uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Phelan, for pursuing this, and look forward to the deliberation, um, in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, before we move forward, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Counselor Harris?
Thank you, uh, thank you, President, I, I want to just, uh, also, um, reiterate, uh, the other folks failing, so, thank you, uh, Counselor Phelan, and this is a citywide, uh, problem, I know we, I have it in... this is a citywide uh problem. I know we, I have it in Ward Six where uh the phone calls come. Uh again, protecting of of Res A is very important. And uh then there are some of the rentals, the Airbnbs, that are um that are just being rented out for weekends. I had a, had a horrible problem where folks are calling me desperate, and so now that we have legislation like this gonna be being brought forward, uh it'll be a relief to a lot of people. Weekend frat houses have popped up and uh in areas and it's um this is, this is great. And again, um thank you to everybody who's signed on board on this as well. Um, it's well, it's very welcome in Ward Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? All right, great. So we will go ahead and move that into ordinance and uh we'll schedule meetings moving forward to discuss. Uh Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda?
Number five, twenty twenty dash one twenty-six, order accepting local excise tax provisions of Mass General Law, chapter sixty-four.
Motion to waive the reading.
Occupancy.
Motion to waive the reading, make Counsel Phelan. Go ahead, Counsel Phelan.
Um, this is ju- this is just part of it because there are some uh financial fines and stuff like this, it actually has to uh come in as separate orders, but this would all be part of the same, and I would motion this to ordinance and advertise.
Great. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move that into ordinance. Any questions or comments? Excellent. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Next item on the agenda is number six, twenty twenty dash one twenty-seven, in order except in the community.
Motion to waive the reading.
I have a motion to waive the reading, Counsel Phelan, go ahead.
Uh again, this is all part of the ordinance. To do it by what the state law says, you gotta break them out into separate, and actually, I believe it's twenty-eight is also the same way. The next, I think the next two uh, I don't know, twenty-eight. Um, yeah, I think it's just twenty-eight. But those all need to be, I would just motion it to ordinance and advertise.
All right, so we've got to move into ordinance. Any questions or comments? Wonderful. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number seven, twenty twenty-one twenty-eight, order except in the community impact fee provisions under Mass General Law, chapter sixty-four.
Motion to waive the reading.
Great, motion to waive the reading, Counsel Phelan.
Uh, this is the same, so all go with the same into the ordinance committee, and uh and I would just make a motion to uh ordinance and advertise.
Great, so we'll go ahead and put this into ordinance. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, thank you again, Counsel Phelan, for bringing these in front of us. I just actually want to extend um my thanks to also the state delegation who worked really hard over the last few years to put this together as well. Um all right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number eight, twenty twenty dash one twenty-nine, a resolve for the November election access.
Thank you. Counselor Promachian?
What, she doesn't read anymore? I didn't waive the reading. Love to hear Nicole's beautiful voice, but I will raise, waive the reading. Um, this resolution, uh I think it kind of speaks for itself, but uh never passing up an opportunity to speak, I will. Uh, there is little more sacred in our uh representative democracy than a citizen's right to vote. Uh I spent the last two presidential elections in southern states, uh using the legal process to ensure people's right to vote is protected. Uh and I've often thought, when I've been down there, when I'm preparing to go down there, um I've often thought, we'd never allow these kinds of issues in Massachusetts. Like, this is something that would never happen in Massachusetts. And after watching what's been reported about uh the United States Postal Service recently, I have a real fear that people's right to vote may be infringed here in Massachusetts. Uh, the language of the resolution speaks for itself, uh but I think the city should publicly explore ways to ensure uh that voter disenfranchisement does not happen as uh, does not occur as a result of the problems with the postal service. I think um even between the time that I filed this last week or for last meeting and today, a federal court um has has um prevented certain changes in the United States Postal Service from occurring because it would have that impact of disenfranchising voters uh in certain areas. So I just, uh I'm just asking that we we have a discussion publicly and we explore potential um solutions to make sure that uh everybody maintains their right to vote here. Um now whether that's uh neighborhood drop-off locations for ballots across the city or curbside drop-off uh or curbside voting, uh everything should be on the table. And I've discussed these issues with uh the city clerk, and uh I have the utmost confidence in her and her team. They do a fantastic job. They did a fantastic job in this past election. Uh, they continue to work with the the amazing professionalism. Um so, nothing I'm raising here um is at all uh calling into question the job that they do. Um, and I'm not raising anything that they haven't already thought of. The only difference is that I'd like the process to be more transparent, inclusive, uh and done through the council uh meetings and the public input um and involvement come through the the city council as well. So um I'd ask my colleagues um to uh to positively uh support this, uh and I would, I would move for approval.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Okay, I do have some colleagues, I believe, who wanted to speak on this matter. Uh Counsel Kane?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I I sort of don't under, I mean, I I, there's a lot of rhetoric in this, in this resolution, and so I I I hope that we can separate out sort of the 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 rhetoric that's going on right now versus the the realities, and I think um, you know, we're in a very unique position because one of our colleagues actually works for the United States Postal Service. And so I would, you know, through you, Madam President, I hope that he would enlighten us with uh, you know, some realities of what's taking place uh in the situation at the post office. In fact, this will affect your job dramatically if there are changes uh to uh how the process for elections are are going to be conducted. So I just, I would love to hear uh Counsel Harris's opinion overall on the language in this resolution, what the realities are at the United States Postal Service, and um potential recommendations, if you don't mind.
I imagine he's recusing himself as it would be a conflict of interest for him to speak.
Well, I was just gonna say that I'd be more than happy to open it up to uh Counsel Harris, but I want to be respectful as well as to any potential conflicts.
I I have um, I have no, I, I'm gonna be real careful. It, when it comes to conflict of interest, um there, it it's a fine line, but I can, I can speak as a, as a counselor, I can speak to if, I I can't speak to the media. So uh, media can reach out to me and I can give them um, I can give them a number to call to get a official statement. I am not going to speak for the United States Postal Service. I'm just gonna speak from, for me as a counselor and um and just say that uh um, looking at the resolution, I I uh without looking at um some of the uh, some of the post office uh items that are on it, I would say that um you know, that the importance, the importance is uh of of uh of the vote by mail is 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 the same, and the beauty of the mail is it's called the sanctity of the mail, and that's the first thing we're taught a long time ago, thirty-three years ago. And I think if we have places that aren't being, aren't being like, for instance, uh, they, there's mention of like firehouses and other places. I I think that uh it possibly could, 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 could be a, could be a problem and then open up the door for for controversy. As uh as far as the, the, what you read, uh is, uh, I can't really speak too, too, too much about it. Um, uh, again, I I I have nothing to gain in in speaking on it, so I don't believe that there's uh any violation of the Hatch Act. Um, but um, I I, again, I'm very limited. I wish I I could speak more about it, but I do know that um, that um, I uh we have to work with clerks' offices, and that's what I have. Maybe um I can direct it to uh Nicole, and she can maybe describe uh, Madam Clerk, you can describe probably how the election season went with us and how we began it, and what, and this way you can actually maybe speak to what happened via me without me getting in trouble.
Thank you, Counsel Harris. I would, I would love the opportunity. Um, and to your resolution, Brian, um I see your concerns and I hear um what is being said in the media and um, but we did not experience that here in Quincy. Um, in Quincy, uh, my assistant, Joe Newton, and I went over and met with um Counsel Harris at his office, and we spoke about strategies that we would use ahead of time to ensure that all of our ballots are counted, and that we worked um tirelessly to um ensure that um e- every drop was made, and every ballot was picked up. And when I say that, I mean Saturdays, I mean night drops. We did everything that we could. Um Counsel Harris um made sure that we had somebody that we could call at all times and um ask them, you know, do we have ballots over there? When can we get them dropped off? Can we do a morning? Can we do a uh a middle of the day? Can we do an afternoon and um evening pickup? And and every postal employee that we worked with was um utmost professional, and they had the integrity of the vote was the first and foremost thing um I can say for the Quincy Post Office. We worked with oh-two-one-six-nine, we worked with oh-two-one-seven-oh and seven-one. We sorted our mail ourselves in Quincy so that we didn't have to send it to Boston for processing. And that was at the idea of um Counsel Harris. That saved us three days just in going out. And um, you know, three days, um, we would get in the mail out of this office um on a daily, getting it to the um recipient within, you know, two or three days of um receiving their application. So we were very proud of that and very proud of our post office.
Thank you, thank you, Nicole.
Um, thank you, Counsel Harris. I I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that, but I appreciate your uh na- navigating that professionally and uh to Nikki, thank you so much. I I just wanted those comments to come out because I I feel oftentimes when there's national rhetoric going on, that people like to apply what's going on and the sort of uh this level up here locally when those things aren't taking place. And so, you know, I appreciate the work that you're doing to protect the integrity of the elections, which are very important, and I don't want this statement to be a reflection that we don't uh, you know, believe or side with you or, you know, uh, you know, that we don't think you're doing a good job because I I understand that you're protecting it, but I just want everyone else to know that that process is protected by you, the city clerk. So um, thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Kane. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? On this item, Counsel Mahoney?
Hi, um, I want to thank Brian Palmucci for bringing this forward, and and I understand um actually where Counsel Kane is coming from too. And Nikki, I think you did an outstanding job, you and your department did an outstanding job um at the primaries, because it is a tall task to ask. This is a different, we're at a different time in our um voting process. This isn't something we've ever done before. And um, I I I do know that some of the feedback that I got back from people, um because it's less about the US post office and more about the fact that they're afraid to go into vote, but they also were afraid to vote because they had to put it into an envelope and they weren't sure if they're a resident of the City of Quincy, somebody looking at my vote. So, you know, I assured a lot of people that there, you had way too many votes to actually take the time to actually look at each and every individual. You had to look at their signature to validate that who they were, but I highly doubted that anybody that was in your department or group that was doing that, they were taking the time to basically say, Anne Mahoney at twelve Berry Street voted like this, because it's not how it works. And I don't think you have that luxury of time. And you can correct me, Nikki, if I'm wrong, but I don't think you do.
No, you're absolutely right.
And if you do, well, wow, that's kind of impressive that you do. But it is a concern that people have because obviously it's a different process. The process of voting was, you know, you go in and you put it into the machine and and that was your process of voting. But with the pandemic, there's a lot of people, like I will use my parents as an example just because my mother has never not gone to vote in person, and although they got the absentee vote, they did, they waited until that day to be able to tell if they were feeling up to it, and they were so proud and went out and voted and got their sticker. And, you know, of course, I was like, I'm trying to keep you in your house, but okay, go vote. But that's, and that's okay. They're entitled to do that. That's, everybody's entitled to vote in the manner that they feel the most comfortable with. But some of the feedback that I did receive was like drop-off boxes and additional places that we can do things would be beneficial for people. Um, drop-off boxes at maybe some of the nursing homes that won't be able to get out and vote, we're changing one thousand seven artery. You might have already mentioned that, but but also some of the um, the, some of the different locations and and some people who who just want to be able to do that. I know myself, my family all voted um with the absentee, with the mail-in vote, and we came, I went to City Hall and dropped it off at City Hall. So there are many ways that we can do this, but I do understand where um Counsel Palmucci is coming from, because there's a lot of apprehension about that, about how they vote and how you collect who vote. So there is still people who worry about that. So it's a bit, it's a little bit of a mixed, mixed information. One question I have for you, Nikki, is um how many, and you might, this might have been in the paper, you might have already reported on this. How many ballots did you get that were dropped off versus the actual people who came out to vote? Do you know that, do you know that that number?
I do not know that number.
Probably impossible to know, right?
I do not know that number. Um, but, you know, we got a ton of people that dropped off their boat, boats either in person, up at the, up at the window, or they used the drop box that's now out front um standing right at the front door to the left. In at City Hall, and it was a huge success.
Are there any other locations that you'll have that drop-off box, or is it just going to be there?
There are not. You know, we were so busy with that drop-off box, um, we emptied that three times a day.
Yeah.
And um, I'm assuming that um, getting more out there would more personnel, more, you know, um, and we just don't have, we didn't have that. We didn't see this coming. So we didn't plan for that ahead of time. Um, but, you know, people did utilize the box and and we really appreciated it. Um, I think it is in a central location. I will tell you this, October seventeenth through October thirtieth, there will be early voting as well. There'll be two weekends available from uh nine to four at North Quincy High School, uh Hunt Street En- Entrance. Um, you can drop your early vote off there as well, or you can um drop it off here at City Hall um at the early voting site, at our office, in the drop box. Um, but that's the only drop box um that we have, that we can utilize right now. We did look at the um North Quincy High, uh the North Quincy uh Library to have a drop there, but unfortunately uh we couldn't retrofit it because they're doing construction there now.
Okay. Yeah, and the reason why I ask that is because the, it's, it's, it's more of um, uh, the people, the disability, disabled people. It is a challenge, it it's a challenge to um, to get to that drop-off box where it's located because it's a long walk if you have to park or if you can't get handicap parking. And you know, you can park out the back, but it's still kind of a long walk for them to do that. It's their option, and our, it's to put it in the mail. And one of the concerns that they have about that, obviously, is that they want to make sure their, their their, their, their mail is getting to you. But then there's also, just for clarification, there's also once you put it in the mail and you um send it in, you can, this, this would not properly work, let's not say, you can check it online to see that it was received, correct? But if you can track it. And unfortunately, this is, this is where it gets, you know, you, you have to be very sensitive because some of the people who may be dropping it off could be seniors that that don't, like my parents wouldn't know how to track it. So that's one of the reasons why they don't want to do it that way, although I showed them how to do it and they're very impressed, but they're, they're still want to do it in person. So I guess that, that's one of the reasons why I think some of the senior houses and some of the situations it prevents them from not doing right. They may be going out to vote, or maybe it would be safer for them not to go out and vote, but I I bring it up just because there are real issues, and I think the derivative of maybe, I, and I don't want to speak for Counsel Palmucci, but I think one of the benefits of this is to have multiple locations, be able to help people in that situation.
Mahoney, we do work with a lot of the senior buildings. Uh, we, we um don't, we're not going there at this time because, quite frankly, they don't want us there.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but, you know, we do work with them. If they have ballots for us to pick up, we will send a registrar of the city out to that polling, uh to that uh designated healthcare facility and pick those up on behalf of the residents.
Which is very helpful for the people who live in those residencies, but we have a lot, and we have many, many seniors who also, you know, live in independent, live independently, um, and who also have challenges. Again, I I'm not trying to create, uh, I'm just trying to um share some of the information that I've learned from people who have shared it with me. I've learned from people who have shared it with me. And overall, just, you know, personally and overall from people, I think what we saw and how it was handled here in Quincy did a phenomenal job and I anticipate that, you know, November is going to be even more work for you, but I don't doubt that. I don't, and you're going to be exhausted. I don't doubt that. And I don't doubt that you're not going to do a great job, but I understand also the merits of where this is coming from and where it was, part of it is, you know, what's going on when you look at the United States Post Office, but also the challenges that we have in a city of 100,000 people and people wanting to make sure their vote is counted. So thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Mahoney. Counsel Harris?
I'm going to say just one thing, which is, I know that I'm not going to get in trouble for saying. A person can leave their mail, because this is general knowledge, in their mailbox. So we've had, we had many seniors that left mail in the mailbox, their mailbox, outgoing mail. Many a time, they have outgoing mail and we pick it up. And so their own mailbox is a drop off box. So that's, and I encourage the folks and I'm going to actually reach out to my leadership at work so that, because I know that I went on QA TV about job hiring and we're hiring and we're still looking for people. I'm going to ask them to be able to, be able to publicly speak a little freer without worrying about getting suspended or something. And be able to talk to the folks to mail their mail as early as you can. If the seniors want to leave it, and we have no problem answering the phone in Quincy Center. And some days, they don't get, people don't get mail and we might have missed somebody because they left it on a Monday and they didn't get any mail the Monday before the ballot took the election. But other than that, we picked up a lot of the ballots right out of the mailboxes. So on a daily basis, you can leave, seniors can leave their mail right in their mailbox and the letter carrier is supposed to pick it up and get it back safely and get it home. So, and then we got, when we were also getting mail directly and we weren't sending it into Boston, we were going right, counting it and going it right, bringing it right over the ballot. So they weren't taking a ride into Boston and then all the way back to us. So, and I think I'm free enough to answer that, you know, let folks know that. So leave it in your mailbox and mail early, that's the key.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak or ask any questions on this item? Okay, CNN, I actually have a couple of questions here. So I just want to start by saying that I want to thank our clerk and Bill, you, and really everyone who's not on this call in the United States Postal Service, particularly the ones here in Quincy, for all the work that they've done around this. To my colleague, Counsel Palmucci, I want to thank him for bringing this up. I think I can confidently say about every single one of us here, yourself included, that this comes from a place where we want to make sure that we are securing for all the residents in the city, you know, the most safe and secure way to exercise their voice with their votes, not just with this election, but with every election and not just in a pandemic, but even outside of that. So I'm happy to see that, you know, we're all working towards this effort to make sure that we can do what we can to support that effort. That being said, you know, I also, you know, agree with some of the sentiment here that this, you know, does involve a little bit of rhetoric, but I also understand that the purpose of this is to address any issues that may come up for us here in this city. And I feel like this is a very proactive measure to try to get ahead of that as much as possible here in this city. That being said, I am very honestly a little uncomfortable with the first five lines of this resolve that talks specifically to the capabilities of employees in the United States Postal Service because it doesn't just include everyone in the postal service, but more importantly for me, you know, those who work in the postal service here in Quincy. And so that being said, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to my colleague, if he'll entertain it, to strike the first four lines from this and leave the rest of it in here because again, it does touch on the importance of ensuring that, you know, as we move forward with this new voting system, that every voice and every vote is safe and secure and counted. Again, I just feel uncomfortable with the first five lines in that for me, my perception of that when I read it is that it could necessarily imply some negative things about some of the US postal workers here in our city. So that's a friendly amendment that I would offer to my colleague. Counsel Palmucci?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. First off, I appreciate all the input. The preamble in a resolution is of no legislative consequence. The resolution, the whereas, whereas, whereas parts are of no legislative consequence. The now therefore be resolved is the only thing that you actually vote on in a resolution. But I can, I can understand if people aren't comfortable with the language, that's fine. I take no issue with that. I do, I do just want to say a couple of things and I'll speak to your friendly amendment. My grandfather, who's passed away, spent his entire career working at the US Post Office. He was the, he was in charge of Fort Point Post Office, which is all the mail in New England goes to. My father works for the post office, two of my aunts work for the post office, three of my uncles work for the post office. If I was born to be anything in this world, it was born to be working for the post office. So I'm not disparaging and I certainly don't mean to be disparaging anybody. And I think it's probably worth, I waived the reading, but I think it's probably worth going through what some of these have been referred to repeatedly as rhetoric, these lines. Number one is, whereas the US Post Office is under financial strain. And I can say that comes from a press release that you can find on USPS.com issued on February 6, 2020, which states that the post office in the first quarter of 2020 ran a net loss of $748 million. Number two, whereas public media accounts indicate the USPS is experiencing managerial instability. And number three, whereas the USPS has eliminated overtime work shifts for its employees. That comes from Associated Press, an article in July 15, 2020, an article from the Washington Post on July 14, 2020, and an article from the New York Times on August 18, 2020. Additionally, that same press release from February 6, 2020, from the USPS indicates that in order to address the net loss of $748 million in the first quarters, that they are imposing a reduction of 6.4 million work hours. Number four is, public accounts report the removal of mailboxes and mail sorting equipment from typical locations. I have no idea what that word is supposed to be. That comes from a USA Today article from August 31, 2020, and a Washington Post article from August 14, 2020. And then the fifth line says, whereas the timely delivery of mail may be negatively impacted by the recent changes at the USPS. Well, that was just my opinion. But I just, I thought it's worth pointing that out. The rest of it just says, we're in the middle of a pandemic, people vote by mail, votes are important, November, this November election will feature a presidential election, and that the timely delivery of ballots by mail is critical to a free and fair election. So I take a little bit of issue with that being called rhetoric as I believe it's, I believe it's fact. The only thing rhetorical in there is that the timely delivery of mail may be negatively impacted by the recent changes at the USPS. And that's more of an opinion. And I would disagree that these things aren't taking place here. But, you know, we're each entitled to our opinion, but we're not entitled to our own facts. If your ballot arrives, if you mail your ballot and your ballot arrives on November 4th, it isn't counted and your voice is silenced. I feel as though we play an important role in this community. We oversee the Elections Department in the city of Quincy and as part of our role, we should be discussing these issues to make sure that not a single person's ballot goes uncounted. That's all I'm asking. So I'm happy to accept your friendly amendment. I'd even offer to amend this on the fly and take out every whereas, so that the only piece of this resolution that remains are the now therefore be it resolved, which are, be it resolved that the Quincy City Council requests the Elections Department to formulate a plan to send and receive mail ballots by mail that takes into account the current USPS issues. Now therefore be it resolved that the Elections Department explore establishing neighborhood drop off locations for voters to drop off their ballots and provide for in-person monitoring of same. Now therefore be it resolved that the Elections Department explore public service locations for potential ballot drop offs such as municipal fire stations. Now therefore be it further resolved that the Elections Department explore the feasibility of ballot pickup, of a ballot pickup program in coordination with the Quincy Police Department and Secretary of the Commonwealth. Now therefore be it resolved that the Elections Department explore the feasibility of allowing curbside voting at locations across the city. And lastly, now therefore be it resolved that the Elections Department report back to the city, to the city Quincy, it should be a city council Quincy regarding this resolution at the next scheduled city council meeting. So I will amend this on the fly and take out all of the whereas, so that there is no question about what the sentiment and what the expression of the body's will is being requested here. It's to have a further conversation about this. And like I said, it's nothing that the clerk's office hasn't, hasn't already thought of. And some, some I don't even know that they're good ideas, but we should put everything on the table and talk about it, think about it, talk about why it works or doesn't work to make sure that everybody's ballot is accounted. So with that, I'll move to amend, and I don't think I need a second or anything to do that because it's my own, my own resolution. I will move to amend this resolution by eliminating every one of the preamble portions that begin whereas. So the only thing that's left is the now therefore be it resolved.
Okay, thank you. If I'm going to take my amendment back, and we now have an amendment in front of us to remove all of the whereases and just go with the therefore and everything with that onwards. So open it up to my colleagues with any questions on the amended result. But before I do, I just want to, Counsel Palmucci, just thank you for responding and clarifying to my comments as well, sort of where you come from on this. Again, I really, you know, I think in the time that we've worked together, you know, we are on the same page with these kinds of issues and making sure that people do have access, you know, to voting, frankly, in every election. And, you know, I do share your sentiment with the concerns of making sure that that happens this time around, particularly with such an important election coming up in November. I just, again, you know, you know where I come from on this as well, is that even though we're not voting particularly on the whereases, you know, the document is inclusive of all that language and I just want to make sure that the message being taken away from this effort here is very clear and that this effort is to protect the voting rights of all the residents here in the city. And I don't want it to be deflected from, you know, from that goal with anything else that's in here. So I appreciate that. And again, I'll.
I appreciate that sentiment. Anytime we can distill something down to its core value, I think that's valuable. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, I appreciate that. So again, to my colleagues on the amended resolve, any questions or comments? Counsel Kane, then we'll go to Counsel Phelan and Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Kane?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I certainly appreciate the changes that were just amended to this resolution. If you want to make this about the running of a municipality and making sure that it functions and operates appropriately as our job dictates, then thank you. But, you know, we don't need this political stuff because, you know, I don't, I don't have the local data on things. You know, you're talking about Washington Post and whatnot, that's all well and good, but I want to deal with what's happening here. This is Quincy. If we all believe in what our Elections Department and our city clerk and the people that we work with on a daily basis are doing a good job, then I don't know why you have to, you know, embarrass them like this. So I appreciate the changes to take out all the nonsense and I will be supporting, at least supporting the Elections Office to look into other ways to support our constituents in this municipality. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Phelan?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm going to support this resolve. I think it's important. I understand the spirit of this and I appreciate the spirit of this, Counsel Palmucci, that we need to explore everything to make sure every vote counts. And I'm very confident that our city clerk, Ms. Chris Crowe, will take this, will work with her department and come up with a plan. I know she probably already has most of these things worked out. So I'm going to support the resolve and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to support it also now that Counsel Palmucci chopped off the front end of it and got into the nitty gritty. I just saw this in front of us a few weeks ago and knew it was coming back up and the first thing I did was call Nicole Crispoe to ask if I hadn't missed, if we had any problems. It sounded like we had any problem, we had problems. And they wrapped things up. I mean, Clerk Crispoe was able to tell me at 9:17 Quincy was 31 of 31, everything was in and had nothing but positives to say about the Quincy Post Office that day. I understand Counsel Palmucci looking at every way possible. I don't want to really get it too broad. I like the idea of the fire station possible drop offs. I don't know about any other neighborhood drop offs. I think it should be a process that we don't get too broad and have too many options because I think we might lose track of some of those options or some of those options might run into issues that we're not even thinking of. So I'll support Counsel Palmucci. I do agree though with Counsel Kane a little bit. I think that, and I know that Counsel Palmucci has said this, it's no shot at the Election Office or the Quincy Post Office, but at the same time, this is a resolve that Franklin and Wellesley should get, not Quincy. Quincy did a great job and I know it'll be busier in November, but I'm sure they are planning for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Crowe?
Thank you, Madam President. It's just more one thing I just kind of want to put out there as somebody who had their name on that ballot in September. Nicole, I think you guys as a department were literally pace setters, not only with the surrounding towns, but throughout Norfolk County. And I kept a pretty close eye on, obviously, what was going on and how different cities and towns were operating. And no doubt in my mind, Madam Clerk, head and shoulders above the rest. So I just wanted to make that from my perspective, not only my perspective, but my experience, you know, back a couple weeks ago, that the level of service that you provided and the level of opportunities that you provided for people to participate in that Democratic primary, again, head and shoulders above the rest and timely and efficient. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so I'm just going to open it up to anybody else who maybe hasn't had the chance to speak yet. No? Okay, so with that, we have a motion to approve by Counsel Palmucci. Do we have a second? I'm sorry, to approve the amended version, seconded by Counsel Phelan. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Kane?
Yes.
Counsel Crowe?
Yes.
Counsel DeBono?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci?
I saw him wording the mouth, the word yesterday.
Counsel Phelan?
Yes, sorry, sorry, I was muted, sorry.
Counsel Phelan, yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Okay, the amended version passes, thank you. Okay, can I please have a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes?
Motion.
Motion to review by Counsel McCarthy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Phelan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers or city boards? Okay, seeing none. Any unfinished business in proceeding meeting?
I.
Counsel Mahoney?
I just had a quick question and it was to Chris Walker. The, and I'm sure we have done this, but the municipal reporting deadline is September 25th for coronavirus fund for the state. So I'm just curious to know whether or not we actually have completed that by the 25th by 4:00 p.m., whether any refunds from June 30th, March 1st through June 30th, 2020.
For you, Madam President, is this CARES Act, Counsel?
It's the municipal, it basically is just talking about the anticipated federal reporting requirements, yes, to the CARES Act recipients for executive office administration financing municipalities to receive the CRF dollars and they have to report the activity to the Commonwealth, it's actually to Massachusetts Municipal Association for the CARE Act.
I'm going to let Mr. Mason hit that one.
Good evening, Counsel. As the Chief of Staff alluded to, it is the CARES Act. The CARES Act is funneled through the state in our case because our municipality cohort is under 500,000. And yes, my office is completing that paperwork as we speak.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, that would have been one of the things that I would have anticipated if we were to have. anticipated, um, if we were to have that presentation, but it didn't, so I just wanted to make sure we were doing it. Thank you, I really do appreciate it. Congratulations.
Yes, it got, it got brought up earlier. They've already received 6.7 million from it, so it's not a different scenario.
Um, congratulations on your position. Thanks.
Oh, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so any other unfinished business in proceeding meeting? Okay, seeing none. Um, any reports of committees? Counsel McCarthy?
Uh, yeah, I, I'd like to, uh, make a motion. Um, we had a, uh, a vote in subcommittee for the Special Learning Center. I'd like to make a motion appropriate the sum of 14 million for the purpose of constructing a special education learning center at 178 Old Colony Ave.
Okay, so you have a positive recommendation out of your committee for that to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel DeBona. Any questions or comments? Okay, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Kane?
Yes.
Counsel Crowe?
Yes.
Counsel DeBona?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney?
No.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Palmuji?
Yes.
Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Eight members.
Okay, item passes. Thank you. Anything else, Counsel McCarthy?
No, I'm all set. Thank you, President.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next, uh, Counsel Mahoney?
Um, so we have, um, some ordinance items that need to be passed. All these are traffic reports were advertised on 8/27 in the Quincy Sun and, um, there's a, um, there's a recommendation to move for, um, positive recommendations. So, Ward 4, Counsel Palmuji, 2020-107, add a stop sign to Kitter Street, southbound to Granite Street. Motion to approve.
You have a positive recommendation. Uh, do we have a second to approve? Counsel Phelan, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, item passes. Next item, please.
Um, Ward 5, Counsel Phelan, um, 2020-108, to add a do not enter on Kitter Street, northbound to Granite Street. Um, motion to make positive recommendation.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Counsel Phelan. Any questions or comments on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes.
And then we have another one, 2020-109, add a do not enter on Kitter Street, northbound to, um, Garfield Street. Motion to make positive recommendation.
Okay, motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Phelan. Any questions or comments on this one? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, item passes.
Okay, and the last one is 2020-110, add a one-way on Kitter Street, southbound from Quarry Street to Granite Street. Um, motion to make positive recommendation.
Okay, motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Counsel Phelan. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes. Any other items, Counselor?
No, that's it.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, any presentations of petitions, memorials, or remonstrances? Counsel Crowe, we'll go to you first and then Counsel Phelan.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Excuse me, it's with a heavy heart that we take a moment and recognize the, uh, the passing of former Mayor, uh, Joe Larraya. Joe and, uh, many of his family members, uh, originally from, uh, Quincy Point, obviously held a, uh, very significant office here in the city of Quincy, um, in, in the form of a mayor, but also was, uh, city counselor, leading to certainly keep, uh, the Larraya family in our thoughts and our prayers. I do believe the services are tomorrow, um, awake 4 to 6 at Sweeney Brothers. And, um, you know, one of the things that, uh, that I recall is very early on, probably the first local political thing that, uh, that I remember was, was, uh, was Joe's bumper sticker, which was quite simply, "Larraya for Mayor." And I always thought was, uh, that was really catchy. Um, and again, you know, held the highest office in the city of Quincy and certainly want to make sure that, uh, we recognize him for his service and keep his, uh, his family and, uh, his loved ones in our prayers. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor. Counsel Phelan?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I'm going to do the same thing, mention, uh, Joe Larraya. Joe Larraya was a colleague. I served on the city council with him. He had a tremendous love for the city. He was a tireless worker. He was sometimes the one who would always speak up. He, he might be the, the one of the nine that spoke up and brought up the issue, but he brought up issues that were important for people. I can remember when he was mayor, um, I worked with him on several different issues, you know, over the, over almost 30 years. Uh, I remember when he was a department, he came in, he was an assessor. He had an unbying love for the city. Anyone who does the job like a city council or a mayor have, have to have that love for the city because there's so much that comes along with it. And Joe was, always had a good sense of humor. He might publicly be stirring on an issue, but you could talk to him afterwards. And, uh, I remember, I, I had the honor and the privilege of serving with him for years on the city council and I found him to be, uh, to be a great person, a great family man. He was a veteran, Korean War veteran. He served both the city, his country, and I passed my condolences over to our family. He, he, his passing of an era, a passing of a really great, yeah. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you both for your, for your very kind words. Um, any other, um, petitions, memorials, or remonstrances? I just want to say and echo, uh, my colleague's sentiment here, you know, we certainly are losing somebody who is going to continue to have a lasting legacy in this city, you know, somebody who's responsible for, um, the building that we now call City Hall today. And so, uh, you know, we're certainly losing, uh, Titan, somebody who has really changed the face of this city. And, um, I just want to thank all of my colleagues.